He's muted right now.
All right. Please let stands for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Mayor Muggi?
Here.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie, we're going to be reading off the... Is that just at the end or is that now when it comes to roll call? Because we do have somebody that's out. So are we going to read off for everything or just when we get to voting on things?
I think when you vote.
Okay, that's good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mayor. First up, item A, July 1st, 2025 workshop and regular meeting minutes. Item B, general claims of $1,652,301.36. Item C, HRA claims of $6,301.51. Item D, approved proposed ordinance amending chapter 112 bingo and charitable gambling. Item E, application for a temporary on sale liquor license and an application for charitable gambling for exempt permit for Church St. Peter Fall Festival to be held September 20th through the 21st of 2025. Item F, special event permit for the VFW POW and MIA Remembrance Walk. Item G, special event permit for the Wilderness Inquiry Canoe Mobile Event. Item H, resolution accepting donations for June of 2025. Item I, building permit report for June of 2025. And item J, approval revision to AT&amp;T Tower lease agreement with related exhibits.
Thank you. You can always tell summer's starting to fly by when we're talking about the Fall Festival over at St. Pete's. So would anybody like to poll any at this time?
I would like to poll item D, please.
All right, item D. Lots pulled. Can I please get a motion to accept the rest?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember McKenzie?
I'll second that.
Second, Councilmember Schwer. All those in favor say aye.
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 Should I take individual?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Nordby?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? Approved consent agenda, Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwer?
Aye.
Mayor Muggi?
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Next is going to be meeting open to the public. We have three that are going to be talking about the one you pulled. So that will be coming up there if you want to look. Those are the names for that one, too. Also, we have one here. I'm going to do a little bit different when it comes to coming up. Just to give your name as far as that. We already have the address. Just say name and resident. That way we can... So that we do have the... If we need to get ahold of you, we do have your address on there. So Dave Nelson? Your time's already started. We'll hit the clock again for you.
Okay, Dave Nelson, I'm a resident in North St. Paul. How is he parked? That's great. You know, they got the pickleball court and that in. And that park gets a lot of use in that building. I don't know what occupancy or how many people supposed to be allowed in there. I was at the parking rec meeting. They kind of told me 47. Well, there was 51 vehicles there. I'm sure not everybody had more than just one person in per vehicle. And it's hard to get up the street because some of these trucks had the mirrors extended because I suppose they had bigger trailers they were pulling. They never pulled them in. I had 12 inches on one side, 14 inches on the other side. Then I went up because I go to Charles North. I had to back up and then go again. There is four other residents that are complaining about the parking there. When they lease out the building, should be parking only that surrounds the park. Or I have noticed there is people that come in and they drive on the lawn up to the building. They unload their gas grill because there's only charcoal there. They unload their gas grill and they do their cooking and that. They unload into the building. Why didn't you put a small parking lot, blacktop parking lot? And right in front of the doors, two handicap spots for the people that are handicapped that are renting that building. And if you want in the wintertime, that could be part of the ice rink. I don't know. But it does get a lot of use. And that's because it's a lot cheaper than KC. KC, I helped put in the playground there. I helped at Silver Lake. I helped at one other playground to help put it in. And that's all. They get used a lot. And I would like to... For the residents, there should be no parking for people that are renting the park or the buildings on the resident's side because the people have a hard time. And there's no way a fire truck or an ambulance would have got through at the time when I went through and I had to back up and go ahead and back up again to get out. If I met a car, one of us would have had to back up. That's how tight it is. But it gets a lot of use because it's cheaper to rent. The people that rent it just need to be notified. You cannot park on the resident's side. You only park on the park side. And that... But if you put a parking lot down below, that would be great. Right with a door, two handicap spots. And then other people, it would lighten the load on the street. So... But no, I appreciate everybody, all the city workers, what they do in the park. And that, they mow the grass, stir up the mosquitoes from eating. Have a good day.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thanks, Dave. All right.
I think for convenience sake, for our audience members that are here this evening, we will... Pulled item, we'll make that item A and then we'll just bump everything down.
Okay.
So item A will be item D pulled from the consent agenda, which is the approved proposed ordinance amending chapter 112, the bingo and charitable gambling. You know, turn that over to Councilmember Nordby.
Thank you. I pulled this item because I feel that it's unclear and I wanted some clarification, hopefully. So I have many questions, but we're going to start with the first one. The beginning of this ordinance reads, "It shall be unlawful for any person to conduct lawful gambling regulated by this chapter directly or indirectly upon any premise or by any device without first obtaining either an annual premise permit or a temporary local permit." Jack, if you would, could you please tell me how to read or where to read where it says... How does that first statement... How do we read it? Who is this affecting and who is this regarding? Because it doesn't really clarify it.
Yes, and I do agree that the laws around this are a little bit unclear and they use a lot of very similar terminology. So this is kind of a basic premise statement. The intention of this amendment is to clarify but not really change any of the current regulations. So this is saying that you need to either get a premises permit, and that is a state level permit, or obtaining a temporary local permit. That would be through the city. So this does not affect other than some changes to the fees later on, clarifying... There was a mismatch between what was on the books and what we were actually doing in practice. And so this is just clarifying that you must be licensed by either the state or the city to conduct charitable gambling.
Okay, so you're saying if you currently have a gambling license through the state, you are not required to get a temporary or an annual license through the city?
Yes, so you are required... So the city is allowed to. And what this is to clarify on, you get a license through the state annually. The city is conducting a background check to make sure there are no violations on that. This is... There is a cost associated with that background check. That is what this is clarifying. So there is still an ongoing involvement.
So let me... So I'm going to just pick a random member of the audience. I know some of them are from the VFW. They currently get their license from the Minnesota Gambling Control Board. Right now, my understanding is there is no city involvement with that license. Will this change that or is that a misunderstanding of this ordinance?
Yes, so this will sort of change that. So the city is, and there's a specific statutory provision on, we are not allowed to require further licenses or permits, but the city is allowed to require an annual background check. So this would... And it's in the code already and it's just not something that we have been doing in practice. It's technically in there as $150 a year, which is more than we are allowed to charge under the statute. And so this would be to keep the requirement that is currently in the code but turn it into something that we are doing and are allowed to do. It is not, to potentially head off a further question, something we are required to do.
So just to be clear, if I'm reading the intent of this... Is it code? What's the name of the correct...
The ordinance.
Or ordinance, thank you. So now every single person... Or I'm sorry, every single organization, charity or not... No, I apologize. Every single charity organization that conducts gambling within the city of North St. Paul would now be required to submit to the city a permit for the annual license?
No, would be required to undergo a background check once a year. Which is, again, just like where this cleanup is coming from. So there is a specific statute that lets us require that background check. It was in the code already, but in what we felt was an unclear way and was charging more money than was allowed under the statutes. It would be within the council's power to just not require that. Again, the intention behind this as drafted was to take what was already in the code and harmonize it with the statute. If the council wants to make a change and not require... To have the code not require that, then the council could do that. The intention behind making charitable gambling... You know, organizations undergo a background check once a year is to make sure that organizations are not, you know... There aren't violations that are occurring elsewhere in the state since some of the requirements do involve, you know, whether or not there have been violations before. And again, I defer to council. I understand there's some feelings in the audience. I defer to council whether the city wants to require that. And again, this is drafted as what was already in the code, but harmonizing it with what is in the statutes.
So I'm going to talk for a while and try and clarify all my questions because I think otherwise they're going to want to come up five times. Okay, so the background check, we'll table that for now. So the ones that are licensed through the state of... Through the Minnesota Gambling Control Board and pay their fee and are bonded through them, is there any license fee associated with this ordinance that they would now have to pay to the city?
No.
Okay, so there's no fee for those that are regulated through Minnesota Gambling Control Board? The ordinance just states that there was a background check. Now, for those that conduct charitable gambling who are not licensed... Because there are three... I'm going to use this in the loosest possible. There are three ways you can get a permit slash license through the Minnesota Gambling Control Board. You can get a regular license, which I believe most of these people have. You can get an exempt permit and you can also get an excluded permit. For those three permits, I'm assuming by the way the ordinance reads, that they would still be required to get the background check. Is that an accurate statement?
So the licensed organizations undergo a background check?
Through the state, all right.
Through the state. That would be the city. So that's the $100 annual background check through the city. So this would be licensed organizations get an annual background check. There was a $100 cost associated with getting the background check. Again, whether the city wants to do that, up to you. How much we charge for that capped at $100 by statute. Could charge less if desired. For exempt or excluded... For excluded, there is very little regulation. It's a very narrow category. It is specifically, you know, it's excluded under the Minnesota statutes. And city code says that it's not subject to any requirements under chapter 112. So excluded, which again is mostly limited to bingo at senior living facilities, that can just be hosted and there's very little government involvement with it. There's certain caps they have to follow to qualify, but there's basically no regulation. Exempt, an exempt permit is basically a... That's the sort of temporary, special, one-time event gambling permit. That would require a permit from the city. Again, that's not a change from what we have been doing or how we've been presented. Clarifies what the fee is. Again, I think there was a $150 fee for that and it wasn't clear whether that was for every event in a year or for one or whatever. So that's been clarified. So a licensed organization, they get their license from the state. They get a background check from the city. They're good to go. Excluded, they're just good to go. Exempted, they have to get a permit from the city. That would be, I believe it's $25 a day.
Okay. I do appreciate all this.
Do you mind if I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So as you're putting that decision to council to say whether or not they need to do the background checks, part of the decision that the city has to make is to find out if they have made any violations before that is given out, correct? And we would not know that if there wasn't a background check?
That is the point of doing a background check is to discover if there have been any violations. Because again, you know, lots of charitable organizations do gambling in multiple jurisdictions. And we might not know if there have been violations without performing a background check. And so that's... And then it's done annually. Again, just to see if there have been any new violations that have come up.
Okay. And then... The other one of my next questions is... Well, I guess at this time I do have more questions, but I'm going to pause. And at this time, I'm going to invite some of... Just so we're all on the same page. I'm going to invite some of our local business members that do participate in this so they can explain their process and how this new process would affect them. If that's okay with everybody?
Sure.
Who would like to go first? Yeah.
But I got confused. I needed a minute.
Good day. I'm Dan Bronck, non-resident. But I am the gambling manager of the North St. Paul American Legion. So in order for me to be a gambling manager, every year I have to go to gambling classes, get recertified by the state, get a background check, pay my fees and then get issued my license. On this new city ordinance, he wants to charge, do another background check even though I'm getting one done by the state of Minnesota. I carry a $10,000 bond on me. So it's just kind of redundant as a person who's already certified from the state of Minnesota who gets a background check every year to pay another fee to the city council to do the same thing. It doesn't make sense to me, you know, because the people that get temporary permits don't have... They don't do the gambling classes that are required by the state law. They don't attend continuing education. They don't go to the conferences. They don't carry bonds. They get a one-day permit, they do their event and they're done. For the VFW myself, we do everything that's in accordance with the state law, $10 conferences, carry $10,000 bonds and do a background check every year. So this is kind of redundancy for us to pay another fee when you're going to get the same outcome.
You've never done a city one?
I have never done a city. I brought my past commander, gambling manager, Randy Bastier. We have never paid a fee to the city of North St. Paul and we have never been in compliance or any non-compliance. Our loss charitable cash loss last year was only $800 out of a $5 million industry, you know. But we have never, ever done a background check to the city of North St. Paul. So it seems redundancy to me that I do everything on the state side to stay current and they do a background check. Now you guys want to implement this and have us do it again. You're going to get the same outcome from the state of Minnesota. If I didn't pass the state of Minnesota, my gambling license would be revoked right away, you know. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Did a member of the VFW wish to speak as well?
Good evening. I hope you folks know that you are keeping us from watching the All-Star game, but we're more than willing to give up that. My name is Pete Olafson. I am not a member of North St. Paul, but I belong to the VFW Post 1350, which is a resident of North St. Paul. I think I just want to repeat what the American Legion fellow said. We do the same thing. We have a state gambling license. We do have to go through all kinds of paperwork for that. We pay the license every three years. We get audited by them, compliance review thing. So it's not like we're running Fast and Furious. We are very highly controlled. And it's not that we don't necessarily object to this background check thing, but we think it's already being done. So you have any questions of me?
Thank you.
Okay.
It almost reminds me of the food truck thing we had going where it was the license worked its way down. If they didn't have one, if somebody just came in to here and didn't have anything. Almost kind of figures that out.
Doesn't make any sense to do it twice unless...
Yeah. As long as somebody has it above, then why would we as a city have to do it?
Unless there's something we're not thinking about, Jack, but...
So was there any case where somebody would...
I mean, again, it's a risk management thing. The statute allows us to require this annual investigation fee to perform this, you know, a sort of a background investigation on gambling within the city. The idea behind that is that that will allow the city to have a better idea of if there are, you know, violations occurring outside of the city or if there's other, you know, illegal activity associated with an organization that would be cause for concern. There are other regulations as well. Of course, they still have to get the license through the state. And so I think it's just up to the city of... Do you feel that the state background check, state process is enough guarantee for the city? Or would you like to conduct your own investigation?
So it sounds like we're cleaning it up, but nobody's ever done it.
That's exactly how I'm reading it, is that it's... The verbiage isn't clear in the current ordinance. So you cleaned it up, made it clear. The city isn't currently doing that right now. We're not practicing it. We fixed what is in the ordinance, excuse me. Should this occur and we have to complete or we feel it's necessary to complete a background investigation on this, I would say that what we did was correct by cleaning up the ordinance and just restating it.
So I guess my next question would be for Brian. To the best of your knowledge, and maybe Jenny, to the best of your knowledge, has any charity in the city of North St. Paul paid us a $100 fee ever?
This was just recently implemented with the last community development director that we had that is no longer here. It was one of things that she did before she left. And it was implemented and it was above what the statute even required. So as we looked into it and saw that it was already on the bill because yearly we go through the fees and rates and we picked it up after the fact and saw that we had not charged for that at this point. So we were readdressing it coming forward. But I guess I didn't realize there was redundancy with the state. And just out of curiosity, when you guys get your license and pay for that, is that like at the beginning of the year or is there a certain date? And then do we do it at the same time the state does when you guys turn in your information?
Dan Bronck, non-resident. To answer the question is, it's done by when you were appointed as the gambling manager, the charitable manager. So mine ends in March of every year. So it's when you get... You take your classes, you pass the gambling test. Then you send in your bond, get a $10,000 bond. Then when you get all that submitted, that's when your license is issued to you. You can do a one-year, a three-year and that's about it. But on a note is that most of us that are charitable gambling in North St. Paul, we all have CPAs that do all our auditing. So we have another checks and balance. We use Landon Scott. So we have our own internal controls, but we also send it out for an independent person to inspect our records to make sure there's no fraud or abuse going on. So we're doing multiple checks and balances to keep off the radar, to keep our organizations going. So we just don't do it in an internal house. A lot of us send it out to CPAs to do it all and make sure all our stakeholders, like American Legion, we have 600 stakeholders. So they all get the annual report of how we did. So there's a lot of checks and balances, you know, and just to clean... You know, I would look at the city ordinance and say, hey, if you've been licensed through the state of Minnesota, then you're exempt from paying the $100 city fee, you know. If you've gone through everything to get certified and carry the bond and all that, then you're considered exempt from paying the city background check. And then on that note, I don't know, I got like three minutes, less than three. If you guys deny it, then do we lose our charitable gambling license? If you say, hey, you guys don't... Because how I read it is you guys have the approval or non-approval who gets to do charitable gambling in your city. That's all tied into that. So somebody to say, hey, we don't like the veterans organizations. We're not going to approve it. We lose. Why would we be in the town then, you know? The verbiage is not really clear in there, you know, it's not. It's came up out of nowhere. It was tried a couple of years ago and it got... Didn't go nowhere. Now we're back at this again. So I think it needs more staffing and more better outlining. I know you guys want to try to make right what was correct process that you guys weren't doing, but I think we all should sit down and kind of work through it and come up to a good understanding on that, you know. I don't like when somebody can say, we'll approve or disapprove your gambling license, you know, because the state of Minnesota's already approved us. We fall in compliance with the state that oversees the cities and the counties and all that. So I think we should... A little bit more time on that, you know. But that's just all I got to say.
Does everybody have a manager like you, gambling manager?
Well, each organization has a gambling manager.
By law, they have to have one?
By law, they have to have a gambling manager. Now, if it's like mayor corporation that comes in from out of the city and that runs, does charitable gambling, Max Diner, they have a lot more facilities. They have one person that oversees all the facilities. Like still, American Legion Bayport, they have about 40 different locations. They got one gambling manager and CPA firm that manages all of that. The VFW, American Legion, we're a single house. We don't have anything outside. We're all controlled internally.
So my question for you is, Mr. Bronck, if you were to leave the Legion, we're just figuratively speaking.
Yep.
They no longer have their gambling manager, so therefore they cannot...
They cannot operate until they put a new person in place.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you for the clarification.
We do have two assistant gambling managers under me. We do multiple checks and balances. The same person doesn't do all the data entry, doesn't do all the deposits. We rotate through so everybody's touching the money. Everybody's checking the bookwork and stuff. That's how we operate at our post. But yeah, you have six months by law to get somebody certified. And if they don't pass the test, then you don't get your gambling license and you have to stop and assist all gambling operations, so.
Learned a lot on this. Thank you.
It is. It's, you know, it is. It's a week course just to get certified. There's a lot of testing, a lot of different avenues and a lot of things you have to go through in order to pass the test. And if you don't pass the test, you get another retry. So there's a lot to do and then you got to go through a background check with the insurance company to get your bond. They do a background check on everything, your family to make sure that, hey, we can put a $10,000 bond on you to make sure that if something happens, you'll pay back the charitable organization. So there's a lot of checks and balances. And again, I just think it's redundancy that we get certified on the state and the city wants to add another background check on it. It's just they got more things to do on their time than redoing the background check that the state has done already. So thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is that public information that we can pull that up online?
Yeah, so you can go to Minnesota Gambling Control Board's website and then you can pull down and you can search right organizations, who's the gambling manager, when their license expired. expired and all that. You can see everything that each organization done, and how many facilities they have, how many offsite premises they have. It's all public knowledge on the state of Minnesota Gambling Control Board, so.
Is there any pending violations?
That was my next question.
Yep, yep. All the pending violations are out there, but lucky for us, North St. Paul, we haven't ever had a violation, so we plan to keep it that way, so.
Dan, before you go, I do have one more question. I'm sorry, Mr. Brock.
That's okay.
I have before me the permits that someone like, to the best of my knowledge, and I would like to ask Jack for clarification, someone who was doing a bingo event or a exempt permit would require, these permits do require a city, someone from the city approval before they are submitted to the state? So would someone that's doing a temporary bingo application, they have to get this signed by the city, this then goes to the state, do they also get a background check by the state at that level too?
I'm seeing some nodding of the head.
Yes, they would, they would get a background check regardless of if it's just a temporary, because it's charitable gambling. They don't want to give a license to anybody that has a felony or background. So the city would still do it, fill out the application, and it would still go forward for consideration and then be approved by the chairman of the gambling control board. So it would still get a validated from them first, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
So the only time we wouldn't need that is when it's the bingo situation where they're not really monitoring that per se? Otherwise, everybody else...
Old folks bingo?
Yeah, old folks.
Yeah. So otherwise...
Bingo for bananas.
So unless it's a senior living assisted facility or something of that nature, everyone else is already getting background checks from the state?
No money exchange.
That is my understanding, although I am not as familiar with what the state, how the state processes those applications. You know, I know like for, you know, for liquor licensing, right, the city does the background check, and once we sign off on it and send it to the state, it's pretty pro forma at the state level. I don't know exactly how much additional, for an exempt permit where it's not a full license, I don't know how much background the state is doing on that. Obviously, for licensed organizations, it's a full background check. It's very tightly regulated, but for the temporary permits, I'm not personally familiar with that.
Yeah, and temporary permits, you're only allowed five per year. So you can come into a city, you can only do five charitable gambling events per year, and then you're capped out, so you can't keep coming back to a place and doing it now every month. It's regulated by five times per year, and that's it, if you're not fully licensed and everything, so.
Five times per year, and I believe there's a dollar amount. I think it's...
1,500.
So it's five or fewer days in a calendar year, no more than $50,000 in prizes in a particular gambling year, and then there's a $100 application fee to the state for each event, each permit that they receive, each event that they're holding gambling at. So then on top of that, there would be a $25 a day city fee, and there would be some review that we're doing with that. So it's, you know, it's fairly minimal review that the city is doing on these exempt permits, and this is just clarifying that the previous code seemed to sort of conflate some of these things and sort of had the, had the permitting review for everything, and we don't do as much review on a licensed organization other than if we want to do a background check. That's sort of the one lever that the statutes give us, and that's, again, that's only if we want to use it. We are not required to do a background check on anyone.
Yeah, my concern is when you talk, in your state statute where it says the city council can, the city ordinance can approve or deny a gambling permit, you know, and I just worry about, is that, is that just people coming in to rent a premise, or is that just for those, or is that, does that affect organizations that own their property, that it's their own building? You know, I can understand, again, a premise permit is a person coming into Max Diner from outside to do a, but when you can approve that, I just want to make sure the clarity is that the city council can't deny a licensed organization from charitable gambling when the state has already approved it, you know? I can understand if you're doing a temporary permit, you know, we don't want this going on at this date because we have fall roundup parade going, and we don't want somebody coming in and selling stuff or doing a raffle. I can understand that you want to be able to deny something like that, but how it's worried right now is that it's up to the city council can approve or deny any gambling permit, and I'm just worried about the verbiage on that from a licensed organization to a temporary.
And that is the current existing city code. That language is not changing. It currently states that the city has that power. The city, you know, has some say, and again, it's for one of the specified reasons. So may deny an application for violation of gambling statutes, or failure to comply with fire code, or if it's, you know, other health issues, and that isn't changing with this ordinance. That is the current city code, and that is currently a power that the city has. So it would have to be for one of those specified reasons, it's not just because we don't like them, but there is some degree of city oversight.
It's a good thing.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Learned a lot.
I'm just kind of curious of the unique situations that you might have, so if the background check shows there's been no violations, but what if the violation is, what if the violation is here and going on now, and, but if you didn't have the ability of saying no, you'd have to wait until the state? I mean, this is an out there idea, but it just, I'm trying to think why this would be in place for something like that. If the violation was happening now, but yet their state background check, they were clear, but if the violation happened here and now, then we wouldn't have the ability to say, look, we can't give you that because of that, or would that be why something like this would be in place?
Yeah, so I mean, it would be, you know, you're, you know, it's not a violation until the process of establishing a violation is completed. Until that point, it's an alleged violation. If there is an alleged violation that hasn't been resolved yet by the time that the city would need to approve or deny the permit, then it's still only alleged, and we'd have to approve it, and then it would be an after, if it, you know, turns out to be, you know, if someone says that they're breaking the gambling rules, you know, obviously we have to go through and establish whether that's true or not.
So then wouldn't this assist us in providing the background check? Right?
Regarding violations, so you could be cited for a violation, but it comes with a corrective action. It might be to fix that violation within one year, it could be within 20 days, you know, so each violation could be tied up for about a year, depending on how the gambling control board assesses that violation. It could be a wrong accounting, and they may say, hey, you got to, you got one year to go, send your gambling manager back and your commander back to get recertified. So it's, just when you talk violations, they can go on for almost about a year before they can actually get resolved. So if you run a background check and that person comes up because he has a violation, you might say, hey, you can't do it, but he's actually got, state laws gave him a certain period of time to correct that action, so I just wanted to interject on that one there too, so.
Thank you. So we didn't have this before the community director, the last one, before Randy was it, didn't it? So this was new at that time then, this?
The fee was new at that time. It's my understanding.
Well, we didn't do the check, so I mean, it was no, no check, no fee, right? Because we didn't do any background checks.
I would have to ask the admin assistants that are running that for, to know if they did the background checks, but the fee was not collected, I know.
And my understanding, based on some conversations, is that we have not really ever done this in practice, and again, the purpose of this was just to not change what we had on paper. And if the council would like to change what the code says, then that's, you know, an option that is before you.
I mean, my feeling, and I'm one of five, is that this is something that's going to affect every charitable gambling operation in the city. None of us, to the best of my knowledge, did this intentionally. Everyone that I've contacted seems surprised by this. I don't think this is the right way to enact an ordinance that affects all the charitable gambling organizations in the city. If it's something we truly discuss, vet out, and want to do in the future, that would be a different conversation, but to surprise the gambling organizations by this that was supposed to be a worded clarification, and all of a sudden, no one knew about it and no one was doing it, I don't feel that this is the right way to enforce a regulation or a fee upon all these organizations.
When, in my, my opinion, one of five, like you said, is, you know, it sounds like something's working and we're just stepping into it, so I think that it seemed like by the information we were given, there's a lot of checks and balances already above as far as with the state and everything else, so, I mean, is this, you said it's either you, and you didn't write, you didn't, you know, this is us trying to figure out, you know, do we go back and take care of it, like you say, to make it correctly, even though we, you know, we were kind of not trying to change something, but, you know, does it make sense to look at it again as far as changing?
Mr. Mayor, I think that's certainly an option. I guess I would just suggest that I think we need an ordinance one way or the other, either to clarify the language that we are requiring a background check, like the current code says, or to clarify that we're not doing a back, to remove that requirement from the code. And so I think we will need a, an ordinance one way or the other to clarify what the current code says.
So we're pretty much saying this is a city, the state's going to take care of that, and we're depending on their judgment with the gambling board and the state and everything else to take care of all that. That was what that would be.
We could do that, yes.
That is one, that's one of your options.
That's one option.
The other one is for us to go forward with what we have.
And just to clarify something too, the ones that do it annually and are forced to through the gambling control board, we're asking currently $100 for, the temporary ones, the ones that are doing a one-off, and this might be cleaning up the language a little bit more, but under 112.09 on the temporary local permits, this organi, or the organization may be subject to a background check conducted by the city police department at no cost to the applicant. So we're charging organizations that are going through all these checks, $100 to do something similar, where, but the ones that want it for a one-day issue that don't have the full necessarily weight of the Minnesota Gambling Control Board, we're doing for free. That seems a little counterintuitive and...
And I, Councilmember Norby, I would tend to agree with you. The reason it's written like that is because that's how the statutes are written. We have authority to charge, it's actually the amount you can charge for the investigation fee depends on the size of the city. Based on the population of North St. Paul, we are allowed to charge up to $100 a year. We are not allowed to charge for background checks for the exempt permits, and that's the way the statutes are written, and so this is, the ordinance is written to conform with the statutes. And again, defer to council if we want to make any changes from that, but that's the, that's just kind of where we're getting some of these numbers from.
Perfectly legal and okay, though, if we chose not to charge either group, correct?
Yes, Councilmember Norby, that is correct. We, we have the ability to charge a background fee. It is not imposed that we must.
So is the issue the money or the fee? I mean, in all of this...
The money of the background check, you mean?
Yeah. I mean, what's, what's the issue? And I'm sorry, Jason, you're very close to...
Yep, agreed.
This organization, and I know personally and both professionally, which I appreciate your professional background in it as well. I don't think, I mean, this is, again, one of five of us, this is, I don't believe that this is a personal attack on anyone in the city by any means, it's cleaning up an ordinance that we have, and I know at the time, the community development director that was here was cleaning up those, and we were talking about fee schedules and what other additional fees can we have to, I'm trying to think of the word off the top of my head, anyway, it's not going to, it's not coming to me, but overall, we're rewarding an ordinance and making it a little bit more clear, and charging the $100 fee for all charitable, Max, VFW, Legion. It could go to Roddy's, Sidewinders, anybody, I'm just throwing these out as an example. Please, thank you. That said, I'm just using those as examples. Thank you. That said, are we determining whether this is, we want to get rid of this or change the ordinance? Are we saying that we don't want fees anymore? What are we...
Can I rest you one more time?
Yeah, one second. Part of it, I think, is it falls underneath kind of like the food trucks. If we're, we don't charge for that if they already have it from another license above, correct?
From the state, correct, yes.
So that's, that's what we've been doing if there's already a state license and it's precedent, because with the food trucks, we don't make them do the city one, because that was a big thing. So we're kind of following that with this whole process, is if they have the state one, they fall in line, we don't have to do the city one. So that's where I see it, if anybody correct me if I'm...
And I agree with you. I am very close, and the way I look at it is if we wanted to charge every group of business, let's say we wanted to charge every bar $100 for a, you know, umbrella fee for, I don't mind doing it if we all talk and go, this is what we want to do, we think this is a smart choice as a city, we want to impose this fee, then we give them all notifications, say, this is what we're going to change, this is what we're going to do. My issue, I don't know if I agree with it or not, honestly, I'm fairly close, probably not, but to me, the right way for these people to find out they have, all of a sudden have a fee and an application they're supposed to be submitting, isn't at a council meeting where we're just supposedly cleaning up the language.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for you. North St. Paul does not operate in a vacuum, so my question for you is, how many other cities are enforcing this background check thing, you know?
No.
I mean, is this something brand new that, or have other cities already incorporated this?
You know, I'm not aware. I think Brian is more aware.
Yeah, if I could interject, they, they did look around, and whenever we look at fees or we look at new laws, I mean, we look at neighboring communities and surrounding cities to see what they are doing, and yes, there are the cities that are charging for that, and there are actually some other cities that were charging above and beyond what they should have been charging as well, from my understanding, so.
And there are some who have decided not to?
You're right. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And again, just one more time, one of the issues, one of the, sort of the reason for this ordinance is, the current code says that we require an annual application, an annual background check, and an annual, it actually says, $150 fee, and we have not been doing that. And so, you know, that, that sort of, that mismatch between what it says we require and what we have been doing in practice will require cleanup of some kind.
So right now, the man work and the liabilities on the state to do the background check and take care of all that, and it's all done by the state.
If we have that ability to look that up, I mean, there's value in that, and when we do process paperwork, I mean, there is, I believe, an admin fee for that, which is a minimal, it's like $10 or $15, which if we're just looking up on a state website to say, look, the background search is done, they have passed, I don't know why that wouldn't be sufficient, but that's up to you guys.
And again, just to clarify the situation, as written right now, the code says that we are assuming the duty to do that background check.
Correct.
We have not been doing that, and so that's, again, that's a problem that we say we're doing it, but we're not.
100%. It's either we don't do it or we do it, so that's what we have to do.
Yes, and either is an acceptable, a legally permissible decision to either do it or not do it.
My opinion is, it's already done with the state, why we have to get into it?
Yeah, or confirmation that it has been done. I mean, we're doing that with like the food vendors and, you know, so...
It's not unprecedented what we're doing. If they got a license higher, they get, that's where it goes, and then from there, it works its way down.
And if there's a violation, they'll know. They're going to know about it, and they're going to get slapped with their fines anyways through the state.
Yeah. So I think we should go that route, where we're not doing it. That's my opinion. It's already taken care of. I wonder what else thinks. It's already taken care of. I wonder what else thinks.
Jack, did you want to, are we in our timeline with this? Is this something that we could rewrite up, bring to the next council meeting, or is this something that you could word now that they could vote on and we could write it up?
Let's see.
Not to put you on the spot.
I think I would, I would probably want to take it back to the next meeting. If we decide to remove that background check, I'd probably want to take it back, because we do, so they, they should still be providing their license to the city, kind of on an informational basis. So we're not going to delete the entire thing, but then I will be, I would be removing the background check and the sort of approve deny language.
That's, that's, yeah, that's, we didn't think we'd throw something out today, it's just, I think we need to take it back and, you know, be able to get it correctly. So, not on the fly, but be able to word it up and be ready to go for the next one. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, I mean, and to Cassidy's point, before we got to avoiding, I actually need to ask Jack if I can vote.
I guess I, to a degree, it comes down to you. Generally speaking, it is not considered a conflict of interest to be voting on something that affects all members of a community equally. If you feel like you are more closely connected to this, I admit, I don't know your specific connection to these organizations, but if you feel like you have an unusual degree...
My significant other works for one of them, to be fully transparent and...
Yeah, I think probably most likely that would be a conflict of interest, and you would not be voting on the ordinance amendment.
Okay.
We want you sleeping on the couch.
Well, no, but I mean, it's about doing the right thing, not, you know...
I appreciate you guys coming out. Because you're here and we've already had you coming up back and forth, is it the background check or is it the fee that's, I mean, that you're really here and passionate about?
For me, it's, for me, it's the fee. Dan Bronk, Scandia, Minnesota, non-resident. For me, it's the fee. Last year, I donated $49,000 back in the city of North St. Paul, U-Sports, High School, the churches and all that. $100 is $100 in my eyes. I'd rather give it to a charity of kids' sports, baseball teams, girls choir. I'd rather give it $100 to them, not to the city. You know, everybody's hurting for money. So to me, if you want me to pay $100, that's fine, I'll pay the $100. It's just $100 I can't give back to my community by the regulations. I have to spend a certain percentage per year by the gambling control board, or I get flagged. So I can't hold money and keep it in my account, I have to get rid of it. So to me, I give it to the city, or I give it to the church, or the baseball team, or the choir team, who's wanting to do trips and stuff. That's where my money goes to. $49,000 last year, that's just me, I don't know what they, VFW, but that's, we're putting a lot of this money back into our community. I get a lot of donation requests from outside organizations, Molax, all that. I deny every one of them, because it's not my community. I support my community here, and that's what we're about. We are the Legions and the VFWs are a community-based program. We survive because of our veterans and our organizations and our community members. I'd rather give that $100 to this community versus...
Thank you. Thank you.
So, you're welcome.
So, in the grand scheme of things, it's the fee?
Yeah, it's the fee. It's really the fee, but I would pay the fee, but then, as somewhere down the line, it's not getting $100 for, when I get a donation request in, or a veteran in need, or a community member needs $100 for the grocery bill or the rent. Last year, we did about five rent requests for non-residents that are looking for money to pay their rent.
That's amazing.
They come to us and they ask us, and we vote on it, and we give it right back to our community, because we, we're nonprofits, we really can't control a lot of money, so. So it's all about, for me, it's all about giving back to my community, not giving it to the city or the state and stuff like that. So that's just my opinion again.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the clarification and the question at the end of the day. It's the background check or it's the fee?
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's the fee. I'd rather give it to somebody else.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
And as a city, how much time does it take us to do that, as far as the background check? What do we have to do on the city side?
It's not a lot of time, if we're looking up and just confirming that they do have the license, but...
Staff just does that?
Right.
Okay.
But I mean, staff was, Cassidy made a good point. Staff was directed to find other fees for the city as well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I get that.
Yeah.
I just wasn't sure with the, how long a short time was in that background check.
Yeah.
So, if we feel it, this, again, just brainstorming, if we feel it necessary to conduct a background check on any facility that has a charitable gambling, do we charge them a fee for having the investigation itself, that we feel that we have to conduct this investigation? Do we go, again, you guys are here, so I'm going to use you as an example, do we go to the Legion and say, hey, Mr. Bronk, we understand that you are doing, we have received a complaint that you're doing this. Based on our ordinance, we feel necessary to conduct a background check with you. In regards to that background check, we, you will need to pay a fee of $100 for that. Again, brainstorming.
I like the idea of waiting, like Jack said, just for the sake that, there may be some steps that I may be missing. So are they actually, if they're actually doing the background check, starting over, even though the state had done it, and as opposed to pulling up the state website and saying, oh, they've already got it and it's done.
Are they in good standing?
Two different deals. So, yeah, I'd like to find out some more information as well.
So it says if you're in good standings on the website and everything else, right?
Yeah, are they just going to the website, or are they actually doing a background check? So, yeah.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, again, the ordinance that we currently have on the books says that they will undergo a full background check conducted by the North St. Paul Police Department. So that is what is currently the ordinance, the city code says, is that it's a more robust, you know, full background check on the organization. And again, we haven't necessarily been doing that, but that is the current city code that would exist without any ordinance amendments.
All right.
I was going to say, if you walk into any charitable gambling organization, their licenses, our licenses are posted by law in plain sight for everybody to see. So you can walk in, you can see that this institution is licensed and it's certified at this date. So it's public knowledge, you may can see if it's, it's been approved by the state of Minnesota, it's all visible for everybody, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Are you going to, well...
Now we have to figure out how to motion this.
Right, I mean, so you still have the charge in front of you, are you wanting to waive that? And are we going to change the language that we are doing a full background check as required and through our police department? So, a couple issues to address. Jack, you could probably address it better if you want specific topics to hit on as we're motioning through this.
Yeah, so just kind of procedurally, I think what we want to do right now, so there's the sort of, yeah, kind of the three issues. So, are we doing a background check on licensed organizations? Number two is, are we charging a fee for that background? If we're doing the background check, are we charging a fee for it? And then number three, there were also a couple of language clarifications on the exempt permits, that's those temporary permits that won't affect the Legion or the VFW at all, and are we going to go through with those? I think what I'd be looking for right now is council direction on those three points, and then it would be a motion to table to next meeting to allow me to go amend the order, to redraft the ordinance to conform to whatever that direction is.
Do we still have Troy on the line?
Yeah.
Okay, it's gone off there, so I wasn't sure. Okay. So the first one, read the first one we got to do, say it again.
So the first one is, are we going to do a background check on licensed organizations?
Are we?
I would say I don't feel like we need to.
Okay. Yep. All right.
I agree with Troy on that one, on that piece.
So, read it one more time, or say it one more time?
So, are we going to do background checks on a licensed organization? Next one was, are we going to charge a fee, and then clarification on exempt?
Yes. So, yeah, so the second issue, are we going to charge the fee? If we're not doing the background check, we're not charging a fee for it.
Correct, that answers two.
So that one's also no. So now the third one is, it's section three of the ordinance, works out nicely. There's just a couple of clarifications on the exempt permits, which is the temporary, sort of, you know, one-off temporary event gambling permits. Just clarifying what those are, clarifying the fees on those, clarifying how long those events can be for, and clarifying some of the criteria that the council uses.
So the third vote would be to vote to clarify the issues.
So, though that language is in front of the council, and so basically, do we need to change that part of the draft ordinance? And I can, I can walk through the changes that are there, if the council would like.
Yeah, let's do that.
So the...
Sun already came out again, so we're already cooking long here.
So, the first thing is, it would change the title from local permits to temporary local permits. That is just to clarify what this part of the ordinance applies to, that it applies to temporary events, and it does not apply to licensed organizations like the VFW. It would then clarify that a temporary event can be no more than three consecutive days.
Mm-hmm.
An organization may conduct no more than five days of gambling in a single year, so no, one event, no more than three days. Over the course of the year, no more than five total days. That's from the statute, and this is just to make sure that we're following the statutory requirements.
Okay.
It is then stating that, adding in the, right now, we have a fee for those in the fee schedule, but it does not, the ordinance does not say that there will be a fee. And so just clarifying that there is a fee as set by council, and then it is limiting to that for no more than four days of fee per year. So, right now, with the change in the fee schedule, it would be $25 a day for the first four days. If they use all five, it's still only $100 total for the year.
Okay. Is everybody okay with what he read off for the changes for that part of it? Question three? Yes.
Also, okay.
I think so.
Yeah.
All right.
About that.
Okay. So the first one is...
So we are not doing a background check.
Yep, okay.
We're not charging for the background check. We are going to clarify the exempt...
The first ordinance is...
...permits. And so I would, hearing where we are with the discussion, I believe what we would be looking for is a motion to table to next meeting, so that I can make those changes to the ordinance.
Okay. So table everything?
I would motion that we...
Go ahead.
I would motion that we table this to the next meeting then.
Can I ask a quick question, please? I'm sorry. What is an event? So, I mean, if somebody's, places will sell raffles, and they might sell raffles for a month, you know, is that an event, or how does, how does that work when we're specifically talking about days? How does that fit into that?
That is spelled out...
It is, okay.
...in the Minnesota Control Board about how many days you can sell it for, and so I can give you that paperwork.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
There's, yeah, there's a lot of state regulation on how that all works.
Right, okay. I'm sorry, Troy made a motion.
Motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll start.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Norby?
Jack, how do I answer this?
So, I is, you would like to table it to next meeting.
Because relationship he's stuck.
Oh, right.
How do I answer this?
You will be abstaining.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwer?
Nay.
Mayor Muggie?
Aye.
All right, we'll get everything cleaned up.
Is that everything? All right, we'll move on with the city business action items. So, item B is now the comprehensive land use plan and zoning map of...
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, gentlemen. And the city, for the city of North St. Paul. And I will turn this over to our community development director, Ken Roberts.
I've got some maps she's working to get put up, but, there we go, thank you. As City Manager Brian introduced, this is a proposal brought to you really by city staff for two areas along Seventh Avenue and South Avenue, east of McKnight Road, that staff would like council consider changing the comprehensive plan and the land use designations for each of these two areas. So, I would kind of clumped them, two areas here along south and then up along Seventh and on Oak Hill Place. The, little bit of background, the planning commission reviewed this just last week, had a, held a public hearing regarding these proposed changes. We had probably six or seven property owners come out, asked some questions about it. The commission held the public hearing. The residents in the area were concerned if the changes would affect their property taxes, and it will not. And there was some confusion, the neighbors thought we were trying to change the designations to commercial, which they already are. Clarify that, no, we are actually proposing to change those back to residential. And after that, planning commission made motions to recommend approval of both the proposed land use plan change and the zoning map for these two areas. So, in more detail, sort of up on Oak Hill here, and the comprehensive plan and zoning for both these areas are the same. So the future land use designation for these areas is corridor mixed use, and that's the same designation that is to the east, going up Seventh Avenue into downtown. I think these were put in place with that commercial designation, I know they were with the 24, 2040 comprehensive plan update. They are, in both these areas, all developed primarily with single-family homes, and there are two vacant lots as well in these areas, and here's the other area, aerial photo just showing the affected properties or proposed properties. And in the Oak Hill neighborhood here, there are two vacant lots that are also included, this lot here on the corner of the third, and then a vacant lot up here on the corner of the second. So the proposal is to change the land use designation to a residential designation, which would be consistent with those land uses that are there. The challenge right now with the zoning and the land use designation is, these properties are legal non-conforming. They're single-family homes primarily, but with commercial land use designations and commercial zoning, which means by law and by our city ordinance, city has very, the city and the owners are very limited on anything they can do with the properties, and in fact, the two vacant lots could not even be built on with single-family homes, because that, or twin homes, because those are not approved uses in that zoning district and by comprehensive plan. So the change would be, again, to change the land use designation to a residential, a low-density residential. And another reason for, my idea, this is really a staff-generated idea, is for a development to occur, which would do a commercial development or a mixed-use development, it would require a developer to assemble six, eight, 10 properties altogether, all at once, and put a big proposal together, and have it go through the city review processes. My sense is that... My sense is that that's not likely, at least in our foreseeable future, in either of these areas. And because of the legal non-conforming status, again, it limits what these property owners can do. So the change would be to a low-density residential in the comprehensive plan, and then, of course, and, go to this map, so this is the current zoning. Again, it's all the mixed-use corridor. And the zoning map amendment that I would recommend is if we change the comprehensive plan, we should change the zoning map to be consistent. And that change would be from the corridor mixed use to an R2, which is our mixed residential district, which allows single-family homes and twin homes. And the reason for the R2 district for zoning is that has a minimum lot size of 3,630 square feet, and the lots in these two areas range in size from about 4,800 square feet to 19,600 square feet. So all the lots with the R2 zoning would be conforming with that minimum lot size in the R2 zoning district. I outlined in the report code language that the city is supposed to follow when considering a zoning map amendment, a rezoning such as this. There are five criteria listed there, and these, the change to these two areas meet all those criteria, again, for this area and this area they're highlighting on the screen. So tonight, I have two recommendations for you. One would be, there's a resolution that approves the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the future land use map, and that change would be from corridor mixed use to low-density residential. If the city council supports that, then there's an ordinance for your consideration that changes the zoning map to make that consistent with the new comprehensive plan designation. And again, that would be from MU3, which is corridor mixed use, to R2, which is our mixed residential zoning district. With that, I will stop and take your questions.
Well, thank you. So at one time, they're all single-family homes, so at one time, it had to be single-family homes, so somebody had to change it down the line, I would imagine, right?
Yes.
Do you know how long ago they did that?
I don't.
Okay.
I have a feeling that it was done when they built the Penn Place back 20-some years ago, close to 20-some years ago. Because at that point, there was approximately four or five homes from the old First Street up, partway up that block, that was taken for the Penn Place project. And I imagine that was when it was done, and then it was, the Penn Place was located in, and then it was probably changed at that point, so that'd be 25 years ago.
So it sounds like it's really not fair how it's zoned right now for the residents, because you said they have a higher criteria, and it's harder for them to do things.
That's my opinion, yes.
Okay. Makes sense.
Ken, super happy you're on the Planning Commission. Your attention to detail's been wonderful. Thank you so much for all this. One of the things, unfortunately, I was able to miss the last meeting, but the meeting before that, you had mentioned, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the way it's currently zoned, if we didn't change it, if a structure built down in the fire, they wouldn't be able to rebuild some of these, is that-
Not exactly. It, there is language that they can rebuild if they start within 180 days and build a similar-sized structure. What the non-conforming language gets more involved with is if they want to put an addition on, or do a significant change of more than 10% of the floor area, then the city code says, "We can't allow that." So even if, let's say they didn't have a detached garage and wanted to add a garage, probably couldn't do that because of the way the zoning language is and the non-conforming rules.
So, in the area, I would say the upper right, there is-
Up here?
-a park plan in that area. We have a park plan developed in there. Is this going, by rezoning this, would this preclude a park installation?
No.
Thank you.
I actually asked that question in planning. I thought of-
I appreciate you.
All right. Any other questions? If not, why don't you read the first one, who wants to vote, pardon?
Sure. So it's on page three of this report, which is page 48 in your packet. It's the resolution approving the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the future land use plan map for the residential properties shown in the study areas, and the change would be from corridor mixed use to low-density residential.
Okay. Can I get a motion for that, please?
I'll make one.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Nordby, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nordby.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwer?
Aye.
Mayor Moggi?
Aye. Thank you.
Second one.
Thank you. The second action then is, there's an ordinance for your consideration. Again, it's, the ordinance approves the zoning map amendment to change, again, the zoning of these same properties from MU3 corridor mixed use to R2 mixed residential.
Thank you. I have a motion, please. Councilmember McKenzie, second?
Second.
Sorry. Councilmember Nordby, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nordby.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwer?
Aye.
Mayor Moggi?
Aye. Thank you.
Moving on to the next City Business Action item there, Ken. Metropolitan Council Pre-Development Grant Application.
I've got another map that I want. Here we go. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this request is to, for your approval of a resolution that would be supporting city staff working with a developer to apply to the Met Council Livable Communities Pre-Development Grant Program for the Nature Point Townhouse Development. This site, I'm going to switch, is this property here along South Avenue, gateway trails to the south side, and Seventh is here on the east side. The border with Maplewood is right over here. Mr. Hong Kong Vang has been working with city staff, actually, even before I started with the city, on development plans for this site, to develop up to eight units of townhouse developments, or townhouse units, something like this fashion. Again, this is a preliminary plan, but to give you a feel of what's been looked at to date, two four-unit buildings, and then a stormwater pining area here, two driveways going out to kind of, or be yourself, depending on which side of the border you're on. Again, showing the gateway trail to the south. Mr. Vang is requesting that the city council approve the resolution to apply for the grant, which would be for up to $300,000 in grant funding through their pre-development program. And what that does, if approved, and the Met Council approves it, provides the city a grant, and then there are some recipient of the grant, the developer is, to further define or redefine and finish their development plans. Again, these are preliminary. There's some engineering to be worked out. This end unit here may not fit because it's a tight squeeze with the grading and drainage, is one example. We don't have all the final architectural landscaping plans, those kind of things. The intent of this grant program is to help support low-to-moderate income housing being developed in the metropolitan, under the metro area. And Mr. Vang is proposing these, these would be for sale units, again, for low-to-moderate income families of four or more in the city, in North St. Paul, if the grant is approved. So the process is, if you support the resolution, that gives me the authority and the city to work with Mr. Vang, to submit an application to the Met Council for the grant funding. They may approve it, they may approve part of it, they may not approve any of it, we don't know. There's no guarantees. If the city has granted the grant, then we work with the developer on finalizing the project plans, with the understanding there's an agreement between the city and the Met Council, and then there's an agreement between the city and Mr. Vang, the developer, for who performs what, who's responsible for what, and to ensure that whatever grant funds are received are used for developing the final plans for the project. Again, with the understanding that the units would be for the low-to-moderate income folks, families of four. And for point of information, according to the Housing and Urban Development, 60% of the area median income for a family of four right now is $79,440. 80% of the area median, median income is $104,200. So, in my past lives at other cities, when people have mentioned low-to-moderate income folks, they get concerned that is somehow could be a bad thing or a negative thing. At those income levels, they're very working-class people, if not even middle-class people by many people's standards, and any buyer of these units would have to meet those income standards for at least 15 years. So it's to help get more housing for more affordable, which is kind of an air quote thing, into the city, and help develop a site that's one of the last really vacant sites in town.
So, Ken, are you saying, when you say that it's a vacant site, is the city on-site right now?
No, it's privately owned.
It's privately owned. Can you go back to the map? I am having a trouble trying to see where this is located.
Do you know where that Pine Creek Window Washing Place is on site?
Yes.
It's like, two, two down from there. There's a house, and then there's this vacant lot.
Thank you. Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, the border of Maplewood is right here.
Okay. Now I can see it. Okay.
So, again, the resolution is supporting staff applying for the grant, and then if we are granted the grant, there's a whole bunch of contracts and things that need to come back to the council for final approval. All the project plans will still have to go through the Planning Commission, through the council for final approval. This is just step one of many potential steps down the road. Mr. Vang is here also. If you want to ask him a few questions, or have him come up and introduce himself, he'd be happy to do so. Otherwise, there is a resolution in the packet authorizing city staff to submit, apply for the Livable Communities Grant Program for this project.
Would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Sure.
Yeah, exactly. You sat through the, a long process, so at least you can come up and say hi.
Yeah. Well, no, thanks, Ken. I met with Ken. I know he's new to the city. It's been great to work with.
Why give your name and address?
Hong Kong Vang. I'm a non-resident, but, no, it's been, it's been great working with the city of North St. Paul. I mean, as a kid, I used to drive on 36 here, and I see that snowman. So it always brings back a lot of memories. My first investment property as a real estate investor or agent was actually in North St. Paul. So that's back in 2012, you know, the real estate market was down here, you know. I graduated from the U of M with the masters in HR, and then I took a side role into real estate. And the passion within real estate was to see my parents being able to come as refugees and purchase homes through Habitat. And so, you know, back in 20, back in 2001, my parents were able to purchase a home through Habitat in St. Paul. And so a passion of mine has always been, obviously, beyond making money, is obviously putting people first. I'm a former Ramsey County social worker, financial worker, so, you know, I work in nonprofits with youths. So, you know, my, my passion is people, but, you know, as a, as a young developer, I will admit, I'm really green. This is new to me. I'm learning this whole architect, I'm learning this whole civil engineering, this whole city process. I understand that when you have someone who's so green on the side, there's a lot of, you know, uncertainties. But I want to reassure you all that I am a go-getter, and if I make things down, I like to go forward and make it happen. I know this has been kind of a back-and-forth plan, and, you know, every year we've got setbacks, but, you know, this is the year I feel like, hey, you know what, if we've got the Met Council in support, this is something that we can actually bring a lot of opportunities in the city of North St. Paul. And I think affordable housing is still something I am passionate about, you know, when I work with, you know, I'm a, beyond that, I'm a real estate broker. I run partnershipility off in Little Canada, and I've seen a lot of first-time homebuyers that are going through the process of buying homes. And we live in a really great state, we have a lot of great cities that do a lot of great work to allow homeownership, and I think this is a good opportunity to be able to do that. I know we're very far-fetched from the, you know, the final plans, but I hope that with the support, we can actually get things moving a little quicker. And like what Ken mentioned, it's not a guarantee with Met Council, but it's worth a shot.
How long have you had the property for?
So I actually don't own the property. It's actually currently owned by my father. And so he had purchased his property back in 2019, right before COVID, and his plans were to be able to build himself a house there. And obviously, with the zoning, you know, I don't think it was zoned for a single family. He's a retired postal service carrier, so he decided to build not too far from North St. Paul, right, his house is actually just a little bit west on the Maplewood area. But my intentions is to be able to purchase this through my dad. We did verify with Met Council that there should be no conflict of interest.
All right. Okay. Thanks for your introduction.
Thank you. Any questions, or?
All right. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Good to hear background. It's a good story. Thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just triggered. So, these units that you're looking at, how many square footage? What are you looking for, square feet? Obviously, Ken, you had indicated that the one to the far right, as we're looking at the screen, that may not obviously occur, just given the, what is it, there's some water?
The drainage.
The drainage over there?
And that's, if I may-
Oh, please.
-the reason to, if we can get the grant funding, or if we can get into the weeds, into the details on the civil engineering, this is enough to talk about it, but there's a lot more work to be done. But, yes, this unit here is a, maybe a 50/50 at best, it could be, so it might only be seven units instead of the eight.
And when we're discussing the units, how big of units? You said family of four, right?
Square footage? There's 738 as shown here.
738, sorry. Mike, there we go, I need to-
Would it be a slab-on-grade then, no basement? Or would it be basement? That's what I'm saying. Slab-on-grade?
Yes. And then on top of the garage, it should be made, it should be about, I would say, 15 to 18, I'm sure.
So it's like the MNI, where you've got garage, building, building on top? Okay.
Would you do underground parking then, or is it street parking?
It's going to be unslabbed, so it should be-
Garage right in.
Garage right in, okay. Each unit has a two-car garage?
Yep.
Oh, well, okay.
It's kind of like the MNI up there.
I've never really been in there.
All right. Nothing else? Do you want to read what we need to? Are there any other questions?
No other questions or discussion?
Yeah, no, I'm good. Sorry.
All right. Just wanted to make sure we're not cutting you off.
Nope, you're good, thank you.
So before you use a resolution of support to apply the, to the Met, to support to apply to the Met Council Livable Communities Development Grant Program for the proposed Nature Point Townhouse Development.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, yeah.
So Troy had logged in before. Unfortunately, his battery is dying on his computer. Can he call in, or is that not an option, since it's supposed to be visually and audibly heard?
He can call in and listen, but if he wants to be a participating member under the open meeting law, he does have to be C and be seen, is one of the requirements of participating by an rank of technology.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, no, is he gone now? I was just wondering. Okay, so he's off already? Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, can I motion, please?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Nordby.
I'll start.
Second. Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Okay, thank you.
Is that before?
Yeah. Yeah, he's not going to be able to do it anymore.
All right. Next item up is Item D, City Code Texting, and that's one more for Mr. Roberts.
So speaking of code cleanup, that's what this item is. Last time, it was about an hour, so hopefully it happens.
Yeah.
What's going to happen?
We're not messing with the gambling.
All right.
There are three sections in section 110 of the code that staff brought to my, existing staff brought to my attention that are unclear and inconsistent of primarily how we license or don't license contractors. And so there are three sections that have a series of revisions that we are proposing to help clean up. So in section 11025, which is regarding heating, ventilation, and the air conditioning installations, we're proposing to remove that entire section of the code. It's not necessary. The state requires each contractor to hold a bond and provide their own insurance, which staff checks when licensing these contractors. Our Rum River Consultants, our Building Inspection Service, believes that having this requirement on the books now is essentially double dipping. And it really, the current language adds an extra step when the city approves permits, because again, we're similar to the charitable gambling, they're checked by the city, and then we'd be checking by the city in North St. Paul. So we're proposing to strike that whole part of the code. Second part moves into section 11027, which I've never seen this before, but there was a special section about trenching licenses and ordinances and requirements. We're proposing some revisions to that. First, that licensed plum air, plumbers doing underground work would not need to get a separate trenching license from the city. Hopefully, if they're digging in pipes, they know what they're doing. They don't need a separate license for doing the same work. Also proposing that we drop the requirement that sewer and water contractors working in North St. Paul submit a corporate security bond, because, yeah, maybe that's a good idea, but similar to the last, the charitable gambling, this has not been something the city's been requiring for several years, and we don't necessarily see a value in it, and it puts an extra burden expense on the contractors. So we're proposing to drop that. And then the last section is 11028, which is about general contractors in general. There's a whole list of general contractors that are outlined in that section. There's masonry, roofers, sign installers, excavators, plasterers. I never knew plasterers would need a license, but that's what the codes currently says. And for driveways and fences. And tree trimmers. We're proposing that the city remove the license requirements for all those general contractors except the tree trimmers. And we want to keep the tree trimmer license as a city license, because we want to make sure if they negatively affect our public infrastructure, like our power lines, that we have a way to go after them if we need to. All the other ones, again, most of those work, those types of work are covered under building permits that they would be getting for any kind of project that they are working on, so it seems redundant. Again, primarily, and most of those are also licensed by the state. So the, what's before you this evening then is an ordinance that makes all those changes with all the pretty strike out and replace and repeal language. And so if the council is so inclined, we're recommending adopt the ordinance in the packet, and that ordinance approves the ordinance text amendments. This is city code language relating to the contractors and contractor licenses in North St. Paul.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion, please.
Can you repeat all that again?
Nuh-uh, nuh-uh.
Exactly.
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Schwer, second?
Second.
Councilmember Norby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
None.
All right.
All right. Next up is item E, 2025 Street Utility Improvement Project, city project number 25-01, which is approve a change order.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item before you is to consider approving change order number one for the 2025 Street Utility Improvement Project. You may recall that's a reconstruction project happening in the Casey Lake area, which includes full reconstruction of streets and utilities in that area. So upon consideration of the contractor and some suggestions on the part of the contractor, review by engineering, and also for Public Works, we have this change order, which, change orders are not always bad things or things that increase costs on project. This in fact provides some cost savings to the project. So what this contemplates is deleting some of the trenchless sewer lining and sewer service lining from the contract, and replaces it with open cut, open trench sanitary sewer replacement and service replacement. Based on the numbers provided by the contractor, there is a cost savings to this change order of $108,493.65. So that would be a cost savings to the contract and to the overall project. And Public Works and myself agree that based on contractor's proposal, and the reason why there's some savings here, the soils, access to the project, and we feel that the ultimate end product would be a better final product. We have been using some of these trenchless technologies on past projects to be able to limit disruption and to improve access to the neighbors in the neighborhood. But for this particular project, it seems to make reasonable sense, and there's significant cost savings to contemplate this change. So staff, Public Works, myself, engineering, we all support and recommend approval of change order number one in the amount of a deduction of $108,493.65 for the 2025 Street Utility Improvement Project. That's city project number 2501. And so with that, I'll stand for any questions the council might have.
We're good to go. I get a motion, please.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer?
I'll second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council.
All right. Last item up on the city business action items is item F, Council Direction on Community Multicultural Outreach Center Feasibility Study and Grant Funding. I have some explanations to do on this, but overall, this is being brought back again due to the EAPC when they brought their presentation forward to give you guys an update on this study and how it's been moving forward. Some of the costs were eye-opening, and they confirmed, and we did see some of these costs for the redevelopment of the building was done by the WOLD study, and they did confirm those numbers and probably even added to some of these costs. So since they were here back on June 17th and went over that, I did receive a bit of feedback, both from public and council concerned about the excessive cost for this, which would be above and beyond the funds that we received grant money for on both state and federal level, which that total is 5.35 million. The study that they had put forward explained that the city would have to come up with $3 million, more than $3 million, above and beyond what the grant money accounted for. So that was the reason in bringing this back to you, and the information is just confirmed from their study. Their presentation is also attached on here. One thing I'd like to go over though is, so in looking into some of this information and trying to find out what options might be available for either modifications to the grant or any way of repurposing. So the way the grants are handled is they turn that over to DED. DED is just an acronym for Department of Employment and Economic Development. The state puts that responsibility on them, and we are assigned a person that is in charge of that. I did reach out to this person, trying to find out what options we might have. I had heard that you can make modifications to the bonding money on, you know, try to shift things around a little bit, but make it still work. Didn't get very good answers there. So recently, we reached out to our local legislator, who got us, got me in touch with the woman who is the DFL Committee Administrator for the Capital Investment Committee. She came back with some really good answers. So different ways to move forward with this. We, well, you have, you have two votes in front of you this evening. First one is to not continue with the EAPC feasibility study for the community center. The second one was to, are we going to reject the grant funding just for the sake that the costs were so overwhelming that the city, it'd be a pretty large financial burden on our residents to take on this kind of debt. That was the concern. But we found out that you can do modifications, and if you take this back to the legislation, I think through their committee, you could do modifications. And when I was talking to her on the phone, one thing that lessons learned of, with our lobbyists, that when we put this forward, there were all sorts of things that we covered in there that, that we were going to address, whether or not it was for the vets, for seniors, for kids, for all these different items, plus fulfilling objection. You know, having green power and all these efficiencies. And she said, well, I can see how you guys are having trouble, you know, checking all these boxes and all these requirements. We got a little more specific than maybe what we should have, from my understanding. So the one option is also there's repurposing. So what you do in that case is you take your grant, you go through your legislator, you cancel it, and then you turn around at the same time and you ask for a repurpose of that money to do something different, which then really opens it up. You could do a road project, you could do a water tower, you could do any number of things, which would be something to be brought back to you guys for suggestions on which direction you'd want to go or how you'd want to handle it. But that comes with a caveat. You're not guaranteed that money. So you can cancel it, and you can turn it back. And she did explain, though, that this, because this money was cash and not a borrowed sum, that it is easier to manipulate and move around, which made it sound like it would possibly be, it's easier certainly than starting from scratch, as far as it being repurposed and try to do something else with it. So those, that needs to be known as you guys vote for these two resolutions that are in front of you tonight. It was brought in as a single resolution. I feel it should be brought, separated into two resolutions. I don't know if you want to add anything more to that or clean it up any better, Jack?
No, nothing in particular for me.
So, and also, this grant was gotten in 2023. There are four years for you to use these funds once it's given to you. So here we are, two years later. Now, we still, that timeline comes into play, too, is if you're going to go back to them and ask them to repurpose it. So as you saw in Dan's information this evening, that we are in a small surplus this year. It is looking like it is not going to be a surplus after this year, moving into the following years. So if we would do it, we would want to do it and get it ready to hit this next legislative session coming up in the fall. Just a FYI.
Thank you. And I was, I reached out to Leon Deli a few times. We were playing phone tag, but he got ahold of you today as far, so then he, you want to tell me what the conversation was about?
Yes, thank you. So clearly, that's an important part of it, that you need a legislator to back you on this process. Our local legislator happens to be on that committee, so that is to our benefit. And I did ask him if he would support if we decided to come back and ask for a repurposing for another project. And he did say that he would support that.
So the first vote is?
The first vote?
Before we vote, I would like to bring, I would like to have a discussion. We've made, we've created a environment where the public in our community can have updates regarding the feasibility study, and we've made that dedication to those. We have not held a public hearing. The last public event that we had, it was closed, and it was discussing the community center where EAC is with it, right? Unfortunately, we lost Troy, given just electric issues on his computer. I, this is a very big topic, a very passionate topic, I believe, with everybody that either wants it or they don't want it. But I would, I would like the council to consider tabling this for the next meeting and have Troy here. That's all I have to say.
Any input on that?
I could text him. Well, no.
The first thing that comes to mind is, right now, is anyone help me with the date?
The next one we have is?
29th, or excuse me, 19th of August.
Yep, it would be August 19.
Does anyone know if they currently have a conflict with that meeting?
Please. Not going against what you're saying, but, so I did have a conversation with Troy. He knew this was coming forward. He was aware of the situation. He did not ask me to relay that to you guys for a table. So just want to put that out there. He didn't ask, but you're certainly, you're right to ask for that.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I, I am asking because I, I personally would like to table it. That's just me speaking on behalf of myself. I personally would like to table it and wait for Troy to come back.
In the past, we have a history of asking for the same thing, of trying to get all the council members together for it. I, I don't have an issue with that ask. I would support that.
I would prefer to go forward myself. I, happened the last time to me, so.
I, I know, but you didn't enjoy it.
Yep, but that's where I'm at.
Or any thoughts? What you prefer to do? That's, that's what we're.
Yeah. I, I, no matter what it's going to be, I think, I think we should just table it, wait for everyone to be here to make it fair to everybody. And, but I think it should be at the next meeting for sure.
Yeah.
And we should have a definite outcome at that point.
If we do table it, is that incurring a cost?
No.
So for all intents and purposes, the EA?
EAPC, we would just leave it on.
It's paused?
Yep.
Okay.
I asked them to pause that, and it's not costing anymore, so it can still be paused until the next meeting, so that's not an issue. Well, that's the majority.
Yep, do have a motion.
I would like to make a motion to table this for the meeting of August 19th.
Okay. All right. Seconded?
I'll second that.
Seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next meeting.
All right, thank you. Moving on to reports from city manager. So we had our staff meeting today. Electric Department's been busy with the road reconstruction project, because through that process, they are rewiring overhead underground when it comes to the primary work, and they're getting all that transferred over. They were getting prepared, depending what kind of weather was going to come in this evening for anything severe, so they're good about that. Also working with Cowan School, and the addition that they're looking to put on the school come next year, so they had met with the electrician there for that job, just to make sure that their loads aren't going to increase enough to where they'd have to upsize their transformer. Community development has been, as you see, reviewing outdated code regarding contractors pulling, and pulling multiple permits on things that maybe they don't need to, so that's a work in progress. Communication's been busy. We have National Night Out coming up pretty fast here already. We have 11 block parties registered. We usually have some coming towards the end there. We had 14, I believe, last year, so it should be good. Deadline for the final registration is July 31st. We have Silver Lake Beach Party, which is this Thursday. They have a really strong showing, so there's a lot of people that have already committed to it, but there's been over 1,000 people that have said interested, so it could be big. We are doing our part. We're going to have PD bring out the extra trailer. We're going to have PD bring out the extra trailer camera that we have in place from Casey and put it out there. We've asked PD to be on standby as well as fire, so we're hoping for a nice output on that.
Hopefully, it's good weather.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. Cooler, yes. Actually, tomorrow, too, for you guys, we have staff appreciation for tomorrow that we'll be having out at Casey Lake. Where is that? From 11:00 to 1:00? 11:30 to 1:30? So you guys certainly welcome to swing by, please. Finance has been certainly busy with the ongoing budgeting. We also are looking at the implementation of our Paycom, which is underway now. They've had several meetings with Paycom and getting close to start doing some of the transition work, so looking forward to that, which Jenny will certainly benefit from and be happy about. Police Department, they got the Fish with the Cop coming up, which is this Saturday, which is awesome. They usually get 80 to over 100 people there for that, so that's always a fun event. Public Works is always busy. They, uh, working on cleaning up some of our restroom cleanups, which has been just unfortunately very messy lately, so to the point that we are actually changing the hours of operation on them. We're going to start closing them earlier. We're going to close them at 6:00 PM. The vandalism has just been really unfortunate, and the one out at Silver Lake on bags of used hypodermic needles out there, it's just absolutely unfortunate. Seen so many places, it just gets shut down because cities just get sick of dealing with it. But they've been busy also with mowing, asphalt patching, fixing basin repairs, and doing street sweeping, of course, tree work all the time. Student build house in progress. We're getting really close there. Countertops are in, landscaping will be in next week. Carpet and fence is scheduled for early August. Plumbing to be completed yet this week. Buell project they're staying on top of, which is moving along well, nothing major as far as items happening. Sewer line is in, in the Buell area, and then new water main is going to be starting to install this week as well. Fire Department did find out, and I know I just told you guys this yesterday, this is how much this changes. Now they're saying the fire engine will be here by July 30th, so it will be here for the National Night Out, so until tomorrow, we'll see what they say.
Daily updates.
Yeah. They assisted Maplewood with a water rescue, no injuries, which was good. They have their live burning training tomorrow out at the training center, and we had our first property abatement this year, which was just trying to deal with very long lawns, so they were staying on top of that. That's all I got for you.
Thank you. Commissions? Committees?
Parks and Recreation had their first meeting. Sorry. Parks and Recreation had their first meeting in June at Housie Park. It went really well. It was the day, unfortunately, it rained pretty hard, so it was a little wet, but it was nice, too. I've not had a park meeting out in the park, so this was my first, and it was fun to have that. We will meet next Wednesday, the 23rd, and I'm really sorry, I don't know the park yet. I got to reach out to Sarah, so that one's on me.
But where they're going to have them?
Yeah, the next park, yeah. I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to reach out to Sarah, so I apologize.
I don't know.
We're meeting in a park.
That's good. Summertime, you should be meeting in parks.
It's nice, yes. And I invite everybody to come. It's cool to have a meeting outside of council chambers.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
The EDA won't meet until September 9th.
Okay, thank you.
The last planning commission met on July 9th. Unfortunately, I was not able to make it, but you got to see most of what was discussed here today, because we voted on it. And just want to welcome Ken and say super happy with you being on the team. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Any general business?
Just want to remind everybody that there's no council meeting on August 5th, and encourage everyone to try and make it out for the night, to unite?
National.
National Night Out, or?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else?
Nothing else? I was, I was sent an email about the Disability Pride Month. So I figured the dyslexic mayor will read this, so we'll go from there. Disability Pride Month is celebrated every July in honor of the history, achievements, and cultures of people with disabilities making the anniversary of the American Disabilities Act signed July 26, 1990, and promotes acceptance, visibility, and ideals of disability and the part they play in our community. So just wanted to say congratulations. I know your daughter's disabled, and there's quite a few, and that was, just wanted to bring that up, too. So if nothing else, I'll ask for a German.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember McKenzie?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. See you August 19th.